This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our February North Haven Board of Selectment meeting. I'm Mike Frida, joined as always by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buemi. Welcome to the February meeting. I'd like to start off by asking everyone to stand for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number two on our agenda, any public comments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, I actually have two comments. First, for those citizens who have been following, who follow these exciting Board of Selectment meetings, will recall at the last meeting, you had agreed to have the town attorney come to address some issues that I've been waiting to address for quite some time. And with the tragic passing of Ed Swinkowski on January 17th, and how busy you are and how we all are busy, I thought it would be appropriate to put that off until after the budget season. So I just wanted to acknowledge that Mr. Frida did make every effort to say what he was going to do, which was to have that meeting tonight, but I asked to postpone it in deference to the situation. Next, I would like to amend the agenda, which we can do, because this is not a special meeting. I would like to amend item three to include 3A, a motion to amend, excuse me, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include 3A, the minutes of the budget workshop of January 18th, 2022, and 3B, the minutes of the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen of January 20th, 2022. So I will make that motion to amend.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second Sally's motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to personally thank you, Sally. We had our attorney coming tonight. Valerie told me about your very kind offer. We still would have done it, but I wanted to let you know, I certainly appreciate your sensitivity and compassion in terms of what we've been going through here this past two or three weeks, so thank you.
Yes, and many of my issues are financial in nature, and so I just thought it would be best to postpone it after this especially challenging budget season.
Okay, thanks again.
So with item, thank you. With item three, I will make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen minutes from the meeting of January 6th, 2022.
Is there a second?
I'll second Sally's motion on the minutes.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. All right.
3A, Bill?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the budget workshop of January 18th, 2022.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
And item 3B, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen from January 20th, 2022.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor? Aye. Item number four, I just want to thank Sally Buemi for her involvement with this issue. We see members of our library board here tonight. So item number four, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Buemi. Sally?
Yes, thank you. Item four is the North Haven Poet Laureate. There is a typo on the agenda. Laureate is, I should know this, L-A-U-R-E-A-T-E, poet laureate. And I am happy that this is on the agenda tonight. First, I thought it would be appropriate for me to just give a little background. Last year, we got a letter from a citizen, Gary George, who thought it would be a good idea to have a poet laureate here in North Haven. He told us in his letter that many municipalities do that. We unanimously agreed it would be a good idea, and we asked the library board to look into this and handle the search for a poet laureate. And as a result, the library board formed a selection committee of nine people. The members were yours truly, myself, Sally Buemi. We also had Christine Cromiak, who's here, a language arts teacher. We had Dr. Donna DeSello, who is a clinical psychologist and professor at the Yale School of Medicine. We had Kathy Imholtz, a member of the library board, Jeffrey Mock, an English professor at Southern, Michael Fletcher, who is here, the chair of the library board, Chris Griffiths, who is a banker with extensive education and writing experience, and we had Erin McDonald, a member of the library board. And finally, we had Brittany Pearson on our selection committee. She was a reference, she is, excuse me, is a reference librarian at the North Haven Library. And she was our very hardworking administrator, organizer, who had to deal with nine people with various lives and responsibilities and schedules, and to get us all together for Zoom meetings, it was quite challenging. And she did a great job in getting us together for our meetings and for running the meetings. So a big shout out to Brittany Pearson, who did a great job. So we all, we met, we worked well together, we established some criteria and some characteristics that we wanted to see in our poet laureate, and we interviewed the candidates. And on behalf of the selection committee and the Board of Selectmen, I am proud to announce that North Haven's first poet laureate is Gabriella Brandt, and she is here. I just have a few words I'd like to say about Gabriella before she comes to the mic to address us. Gabriella has a bachelor's degree from Antioch College and a master's degree from Middlebury College. She has an extensive and varied background. She was a French instructor for, at Southern, and a teacher at the foot school in New Haven, a language arts instructor at Cheshire Academy, and she currently is a writing teacher at UConn. And that just scratches the surface of her many jobs and interests over the years. Gabriella has been published in over 50 literary magazines. She was a former nominee for the distinguished Pushcart Prize and a past winner of the New Haven Library Poetry Contest. She speaks Latin, Spanish, and French. And for us here on the Board of Selectmen, we're very impressed with that.
Very impressed.
We can hardly speak English. So, Latin, Spanish, and French. C'est très bon. During the interview process before the selection committee, Gabriella was asked what her goals would be if she were selected as the poet laureate. And she stated that she intended to be a prosethes- wait a minute, proselytizer of poetry. Proselytizer of poetry. After I looked up the word, I was very impressed that that was one of her goals. She also expressed, and this is what really impressed me, she also expressed her firm belief that we, quote, "We are all still in middle school eager to learn." And I like that, because I like to learn every day, and I could relate to that. I found her poetry to be deep and moving and personal and very effective. I am confident she will be a great poet laureate and do a great job as our first North Haven poet laureate. So I am proud to introduce Gabriella Brandt.
I think you're going to get a shorter microphone if I ever come back here, okay? Thank you so much for those excessively kind words, Sally. I'm really very touched, even though you do have trouble pronouncing proselytize.
Proselytizer.
Proselytizer.
Yeah, it was harder to spell, but go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Frida. Good evening, Mr. Piper. And good evening to all who are here. I want to thank the library board, the poet laureate board, many of whom came out, I think probably more times than I was aware of, to work on this project. And I just, I'm so proud that North Haven wanted to have a poet laureate. I'm slightly embarrassed. I just learned that it was Gary George who had the idea, and he's one of my neighbors. So I did not know he was up to this, but he's a good man. I think that the people who served on this committee, some of whom are here, just deserve a thank. So I did write a poem for them, hoping to sway their opinions, but really to thank them, especially Brittany Pearson, who did have that administrative job of getting everyone together. I did prepare two poems, and I think we all came out on this foggy night, so if you can indulge me for two poems.
Of course, yes.
Okay. I once did a reading at the Poisson Rouge in New York, which is an English-speaking venue with a French name. And all the poets, many of whom were very young and hip, came up to the podium with their iPhones, and they read from their iPhones. And I had paper, so I felt very not cool. And as I said, I do believe we are all middle schoolers, and at that moment, I was not one of the cool kids. So I have since put my phone, I've used my phone to put my poems on. The first poem that I wrote for tonight is called "Legacy." And I don't usually write in rhyme, but I think for saying it publicly, rhyme is a good thing, because it kind of gives you something to kind of catch your ear. So this is rhymed. It began with the earth and the clay and the bog and the forests and boulders and sky and the fog. The river that snakes through the marshes and trees, long, long tidal rhythms for the tribe Montawees. And then there were settlers who came to Haven North, Blakesleys and Sackets, Stiles and Thorpe. Their names are familiar. They live with us still, though gone are their forges, their brickworks and mill. Immigrants too made their mark on this town, farming his families in fields green and brown, commerce and labor, toil and birth. The town grew its boundaries, its business, its worth. So what does a poet bring into this mix? What kind of potholes can poetry fix? A poet's no merchant with cash up her sleeve, but maybe, just maybe, a poet can weave a gentle reminder of the things that surround us, the things that are unspoken but which ought to astound us. The things of the spirit that make life worthwhile, eagles on State Street, a playground of smiles, a volunteer effort, a kindness repaid, the peace of this evening, the boom of parade. So I stand here before you in laureate tone to honor North Haven, the place we call home. You can tell where I rewrote it, because I had to look, right? The next one has a different tone, and it doesn't rhyme. And this poem I wrote when I first learned that I would be the first poet laureate. At the town hall on Church Street, I once applied for a marriage license and a dog license, and now finally, for poetic license. That's when you take liberties with words and people's minds, dangling rhymey things and not-so-rhymey things from the end of a line. Poems like tiny minnows that nobody needs except in secret places where fear or loss or loneliness tugs at the heart, lures the spirit. Now that I've got my poetic license, I'm going casting for rainbows. Not trout exactly, but something halfway between a mirage and a unicorn. Regulation size, of course, or I'll throw them back. It's all legal now, these hooks and reels of language that tangle in my head. Why don't you get a license, and we can go fish poems together? Thank you so much.
Gabrielle, if you could come up here, we have a gift for you. On behalf of the poet laureate selection committee and the Board of Selectmen, I will present you with a little desktop pen set that says "North Haven Poet Laureate" on it. It was generously donated by Arnold's Jewelers, conveniently located in the North Haven Shopping Center, open Tuesdays through Sundays. Valentine's Day is coming. On behalf of the town, we want to present you with this gift and wish you luck and look forward to your poems to future town events.
Thank you so much.
So, thank you so much, Sally and Gabrielle. I have to tell you, I'm so impressed hearing about your background, your resume, what you've accomplished. And tonight, with the two poems that you shared with us, and particularly in the first poem, with everything we're going through as a society today, with the pandemic and people's anxieties are at an all-time high, and we see it every day here with the calls we get. I thought both poems were outstanding, and the first one in particular was so timely in terms of what we're going through as people in today's society. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, anything?
It did paint a very, you know, a very good visualization. I mean, you know, in terms of your descriptions, you know, I could very, I very much, as I listened to the words, could visualize, you know, everything that you were saying about North Haven and the people who founded North Haven and settled here and worked here and everything. It must be good, like, you know, if we put those words to, like, with pictures and a video, you know, and, you know, I think it would, you know, and then be, how will we, what way do we, what way would we distribute this so everybody could benefit or hear from this and enjoy it as much as we did?
Yeah, off the top of my head, I'm thinking of one of my children who's a choral conductor and composes music. He'd probably say, "Oh, Mom." But, you know, there are talented people around, and we could ask people to do something, you know, give us an anthem or some sort of thing.
But even like, it'd be nice if we could print that out and distribute it to the schools or post it in the library or whatever, where everybody could-
I just talked to Christine about coming in to, you know, I'll certainly be in the schools, and I look forward to those invitations. And I'm not shy, so I already foisted myself. I'm Christine, and I'll do it with others.
Not only were your words beautiful, but your delivery was-
Absolutely, that was great.
-was wonderful.
Did you like the phone, Mr. Piper?
What made me, what made me smile a little bit is that you tried to go from, to something more, you know, or technical or current or whatever, like an iPad or a phone, and we gave you something that actually was old-school so you could write it back out again.
I love it all. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Gabrielle. It was fantastic. It was lovely, it was outstanding. I can't, I can't even think of any more words, so thank you very much.
Fossa, I also speak Italian.
Okay. All right.
And thank you, Sally, again, for, you know, getting, going to make the extra effort to get such a nice gift. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, no problem. It was my honor to serve on the selection committee.
And thank you, Mr. Lazaroff. That was quite a surprise, hearing that tonight, so we appreciate your generosity. It was a good shout-out, Sally, I thought Valentine's Day was coming.
I do what I can.
You did it well.
You have your economic development ideas, I have mine.
It's one of our better Board of Select meetings, wouldn't you say?
Yeah, I hope, I hope people, maybe our ratings will go up.
Maybe. All right, turning back to business for a moment, town government business, I don't have any slides tonight. I'll be back with a slide presentation next month. Sally referenced the untimely and sad and tragic passing of Ed Swinkowski, our Director of Finance. So all of us here in Town Hall are balancing our sorrow or sadness and our grief with the fact that we still have to move forward and really stay on top of the business of this government. So I wanted everyone to know that there will be no delays in the timeframe to put this budget together. There will be no delays in terms of Board of Finance meetings, deadlines to establish a mill rate, referendums. All of that is going to be taken care of, and it's all in process. So I wanted to let everyone know that just feel confident knowing that this government, although we're going through a lot from a personal emotion standpoint and from an increased workload standpoint, this government will continue to meet the guidelines, and we will deliver a budget on time for our residents to vote on at our referendum. Secondly, you see on Bill's side and Sally's side, this binder. So about a half hour before this meeting, our town attorney presented us, we have not read it yet, a work-in-progress draft of where we are as a town regarding this affordable housing state mandate initiative that all the cities and towns in Connecticut have to submit by June of 2022. In the beginning, a survey was put out for our residents. As it turned out, it was laborious, tedious, confusing, so that survey's been scrapped. There's a new survey out now. And the survey will be available on the town website. I encourage our residents to really spend time to look at the survey, because your opinion matters on this. This is a very, a hot topic across the state of Connecticut right now. So the survey will be at the library, various public buildings. You can come into any of our buildings and ask for a copy of the survey. It's much condensed. We need your feedback. Now, in the binders that Bill and Sally have, and I was presented with tonight, there's, I believe, four sections in there. And a couple of the sections are an update from the consultant that our Council of Governments, of which I've been the chairman this past year, put together from an informational standpoint. But Bill and Sally, although I haven't read it yet, in the last section there, I happened to notice when the town attorney presented it to me before this meeting, the last section shows some very interesting data about North Haven itself as a town, from a housing standpoint, from a statistical standpoint. So this binder's been presented to us as part of an overall concept where the Housing Committee, that's been in place now for a couple of months, I think it includes Val, nine or 10 people right now, from all different perspectives, all different industries, residents of our town. This is serving to give us, as a Board of Selectmen, an update, a progress report on how this is going. So we, I think, appreciate the fact that we'll be getting not only this first update, but work-in-progress updates as this committee continues to finalize a recommendation. And one last point, something I mentioned in the beginning a couple of months ago, that what we decided to do as a Council of Governments was submit one regional report with seven, with 15 chapters in it. And the 15 chapters are the cities and towns in the South Central Regional Council of Governments. Each town has a different set of demographics, has a different housing authority committee, and they will be submitting their recommendations to the towns in our Council of Governments. And those towns are Orange, Milford, Bethany, Woodbridge, North Haven, Branford, East Haven, Guilford, Wallingford, Meriden, and those are basically the cities and towns. So we're part of that group, and our report will be submitted as a region, but each city and town will have an individual chapter. That's kind of where we are, Bill and Sally.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have for tonight, ladies and gentlemen. All right, let's go to number six. Sally, are you glad to kick it off?
Yes, six is appointments and resignations. First, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Jonathan Lewin, 78 Allendale Drive, from the Board of Ethics, term to expire December 31st, 2024.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second Sally's motion.
All right, a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor? Aye. Bill?
Next, I'll make a motion for the resignation of James J. Thompson, 18 Carriage Drive, from the Board of Ethics, term to expire December 31st, 2024.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Sally?
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Cheryl Junowitz, 101 Knollwood Road to the Open Space Advisory Committee with the recommendation of the Inland Wetlands Commission for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2022.
Is there a second?
I'll second Cheryl's reappointment.
Okay, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor? Aye.
And then the last, I think, appointment resignation on our list for tonight is appointment of James LaRusso, Jr., 93 Arrowdale Road, to a full seat on the Inland Wetlands Commission to fill a vacancy term to expire December 31st, 2025.
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Number seven, I'll move that we approve the property tax refunds listed in our agenda.
Is there a second?
And if we can get those, I'll second Sally's motion on the refunds.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor? Aye. It's hard to believe we're at the end of this agenda tonight.
I know, our best meeting.
Gabrielle, you absolutely were the star of this meeting tonight, I want you to know. So thank you.
Thanks, Dennis, you were here.
Thank you for being here.
Yes.
Well, I guess we're on item number eight. The next regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen is Tuesday, March 3rd, here at Memorial Town Hall.
I have a quick public commentary?
Yes, well, let's do the motion on that, then we'll bring you up in public comment, Nancy, okay?
There's no motion, that's just an announcement of the next regular meeting.
Very good, so we're out of public comment, go right ahead.
Just a quick question regarding the survey for the Housing Authority. I think one of the original criticisms was that the consultant that was hired created only one survey for all the different types of towns and cities and municipalities that, as you mentioned, are varied. Will the new survey be very specific to North Haven and the types of features and demographics that we have?
You know, that's a, that's a really good question. I don't know the answer to that. Val, do you know that?
I, we do not.
Let me just take a look here, Nancy. Just hold a thought for a second.
Or even if there were just several types, one for bigger cities.
Exactly. That was sort of my original criticism, and I think I posed this to Jennifer Capola online, and she thought it was a valid point. And so I'm just wondering if in this new and improved version that it is in fact new and improved.
I think that was taken into consideration.
I think that's a very good point. We don't need 15 different surveys, but maybe-
No, you're right.
I mean, Meriden and North Haven, wow. Those are very, very different municipalities.
So Jennifer wrote me a note here, said, "The committee will be releasing a housing plan survey tomorrow as part of the housing needs assessment process." Now, we could infer that maybe that's been taken into consideration, but we will double-check it, okay?
Always worth checking, sure.
Yes, I agree with you.
And I just wanted to give you the opportunity to give a little public service announcement about the, both the masks, the N95 mask, as well as the kits that are available now, not only just here in the town hall, but in various locations here in town?
You know, it's, it's, thank you for bringing that up.
Sure, of course.
You know, Val and I were talking about this earlier. I was going to include that in the overview. You know, I had put out a broadcast message to all the residents. And of course, the New Haven Register wrote it. The Patch wrote it. It was all over social media. I put it. But, so, I want to thank you for bringing it up because we were debating whether or not to mention that. So here's what Nancy's referring to. We spent, we analyzed the first distribution at 222 Maple Avenue on those test kits. And what we saw was many municipalities struggled. Traffic jams. There was a problem where people on the northbound side, Nancy and those watching, couldn't take the left-hand turn. That decision was made because there was a backup coming southbound. And there was a decision made on-site not to have the people cut in front of the other people who were waiting. So after it was all said and done, I said to the department heads, "We're going to debrief on this. We've got to make this simpler if we end up doing this again." And lo and behold, we decided to do it again. We purchased the kits. We purchased the masks. Myself, Chief Janiushevsky, in concert with the police chief, we came up with a plan that we would distribute the kits and masks all month during the month of February at the library, the community center, and other various locations that I mentioned in the broadcast message. Both kits and masks. And the feedback we're getting, like, they're coming, they're going into the buildings, Nancy. They're getting out like in five minutes. So we're able to create a logistical format that simplified the process, got the residents the kits. And we went to two kits per household, plus the N95 masks, as Nancy's mentioning here. And so far, it's been a success. And we took it a step further, too, recognizing that there's people who are disabled. We put a call-in number where we'll mail them the kits and the masks. And recognizing that there's seniors who cannot get out of their houses even to come in to our buildings, we had the kits and masks delivered to those facilities.
Yep.
To think about an 85-year-old man who lives by himself who can't get out. Well, we, we brought the kits and masks to the, to the, what we, what the state refers to as congregate facilities. And in some cases, we worked with the property management company. This was our donation to that building. And the property management company distributes it to the citizens. So that took out a potential problem where if someone lives on, let's say, 555 Pool Road, well, that's one address, right? So you saw, even the federal government, I think, found out and the state found out that in the original go-around, they couldn't pinpoint the exact address for the senior citizens living in the congregate housing facilities.
Sure.
So as we've said before, you know, we, we really just want to try to educate people and do whatever we can to keep our citizens safe.
Absolutely.
And I think Nancy, Nancy mentioned this at the previous meeting because we did some statistical information about how important it is to take the right precautions.
Extremely important. And, and again, making it available at these communal locations like the senior center, the library, the recreation center, where, where members of our community are going anyway. And then they get there and they think, "Oh, well, you know, this is a great idea. I can kill two birds with one stone and do what I'm here to do, but also pick up a test kit as well as some N95 masks." I think that it was, it was really a great idea.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Sure.
We learned from our first mistake. Even though a lot of people were happy the first time around, we knew it was, it was too cumbersome the first time.
Right. And I knew that there would be lots of people that would not be comfortable going out at night and snaking through, as, as well-intentioned as it was. I knew that there were a lot of people that wouldn't even venture out to, to do that.
You know, folks, and Nancy, the, the first go-around, the southbound traffic was backed up to the green. It was very...
Bailey Road was backed up to the connector. I know. I was, I was in it.
And I just have one, one last quick question because I know this is the time of year where you have lots of appointments and resignations and so forth. And typically, excuse me, when you have resignations, you might say, you know, "Thank you for your service" and so forth. And I just happened to notice that there were two resignations from, from the Ethics, the Board of Ethics. And I'm just wondering, you know, are these people moving out of town? Or was there some reasoning behind this?
So it ties into two things. Originally, we wanted all unaffiliates on the Ethics Commission. We thought that was the right thing to do. In the ordinance, it states that you shouldn't be a member of a political party to sit on the Ethics Committee.
Oh, really? Wow. Oh.
So we decided to ask the two members to, we suggested they resign because of that. They both saw the conflict of interest, the appearance of it. But in the case of Mr. Thompson, that was a mistake that I made. He really, in January, should have been appointed to the Inland Wetland Commission. That was, Valerie and I had talked about him on either one of those. And as it turns out, Jim's a member of the RTC. Jonathan's a member of the DTC.
I see. So, so it's not just a member of a party, but a member of a town committee?
Yes.
Because obviously, unaffiliated is a, is a party. But you're, you're saying more specifically, a town committee? And that, that precludes someone from serving on the Ethics Committee?
Well, you know, this is how we see it, Nancy. Because the ordinance states an officer in a town, a political town committee or a political committee. And, you know, we could, even though they're not officers, I just think that whether it's on the Republican side or Democratic side, the appearance of a conflict of interest on the Ethics is, is, is a conflict.
I see. Okay. I, I just wanted to clarify that because I wasn't quite sure and, you know, there, there wasn't any mention.
But in both of those cases, I was the guy that brought Jonathan in as a U. And we didn't realize that parties changed and party affiliations. But both of those individuals are wonderful people.
Absolutely.
High-quality people.
That's why, that's why I wondered. Yeah, yeah.
And both have expressed an interest to be on another committee. And I will support both of them, both Jonathan and Jim.
Excellent. Okay.
And Jim will probably, next month, you'll see him on the agenda as a, probably an alternate on Inland Wetlands. And Jonathan, I've spoken with, he'll have my support in any other, any other commission or committee.
Great. I'm glad to hear that. And again, I'd just like to echo all of your sentiments about the poet laureate. Congratulations. And I'm just very happy to see this beginning, new beginning for North Haven. So thank you again. Have a good day.
And I think you have to compliment both of them, you know. Shows that maybe they were under, you know, initially good choices to be on the Ethics Committee because ethically, they did the right thing by resigning for exactly the reasons that Mike mentioned. So I think, you know, I think there, you can't say anything, you know, anything but good things about both of them because I think they understood the issue and did the right thing.
I see.
You know, just, yeah, because it's better not, you know, not to have the appearance of impropriety or maybe, you know. So, you know, and we want it to be an independent, I think, entity that actually will make, you know, provide good guidance in terms of ethical issues.
Absolutely.
And one, one final point if I can make? We certainly will consider, because it's difficult, as you, as we all know, to get people on those boards and commissions, right? It may be unrealistic to have a five-member commission with all unaffiliates, but, so we will entertain one D, one R, and three U's. And maybe that's a way around it.
Right. That's what I wanted to say. I have the, the ordinance here. And you can be a member of a, you know, registered with a political party. It says that no more than two regular members may be registered in the same political party. And the alternate members have to, may not be in the same. So I don't want the people to have the impression that you have to be unaffiliated to be on the Board of Ethics. You can be registered with a political party. You could be a D, an I, or an R. But for this particular case, it was subsection four. No member of the board may hold office in a political committee. I wasn't sure what that meant. Does office mean chair, vice-chair? Because it doesn't say officer. It says hold office. But that's been interpreted to mean a member of the, of the DTC or RTC? Because it doesn't say office. It says, it doesn't say officer. It says office. So I, I thought it meant you couldn't be the chair, the vice-chair, the treasurer, or the secretary of, of the RTC or the DTC. But I think it's been interpreted to mean you shouldn't be a member. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Let me say it's been interpreted...
I mean, I supported this resignation. You know, I didn't bring this up at the time on the agenda.
It's been interpreted two ways. One, that, yeah, it could be chairman, vice-chair, or secretary. But it's interpreted the other way also. And the two interpretations create ambiguity. And ambiguity sometimes creates a perception that it could be a conflict. And as we all know, perception of conflicts tends to be reality.
The last place you want the perception of a conflict is on the Board of Ethics, which is supposed to decide issues of conflict.
Right, right, right.
Ah.
Both of those gentlemen, they, they did the right thing. Jonathan saw it immediately, as did Jim. Jim was more of a mistake on my part because we, we wanted him on Inland Wetlands. Both two fine men. And we just didn't realize that when we voted Jonathan in at the last meeting, that we voted him in as a U, but he was a D on the primary.
Yeah, yeah.
And he didn't know. To his credit, he, he was free. I'm sorry. I didn't realize it.
Right, right.
I said, "No problem."
Not everyone reads all the ordinances for the town, right?
I told him, "I think you're a good, decent guy. I brought you in in the beginning. I thought you were perfect, you know, worse than the state attorney's office." These are two fine men that did the right thing.
Okay. Thank you so much for clarifying. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I think that was the right way to go as well.
Yeah. Okay.
Someday, you could change it from office to member, that it would remove...